Thank you for being here tonight. Today is February the 18th. Our thought for today is, great achievement is usually born of great sacrifice, and it's never the result of selfishness. That's by Napoleon Hill. I want to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. Tonight, we're going to ask Commissioner Mason, if he would, to lead us in press tonight.
Commissioner Mason mentioned also about passing Mr. Forrest Sawyer, who was a good friend of all of ours at the time of the incident. He was a good man, a good leader.
Great man.
A good civil rights leader.
Yes, sir, if you will, please remember, Deacon Sawyer in the press tonight.
Sure, let us know about our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place one more time. We ask that this meeting will be a productive meeting, and that, God, you will have your way in this place. We ask that you touch each vessel that's here on tonight. God, we ask that you touch each board member so that we can think clearly, and, God, that we can make the right decisions for our county. We thank you for all that you've done for us and all that you're about to do. We've been asked on tonight, God, that you would remember Deacon Forrest Sawyer and his family, God, during this time of loss. God, we ask that you continue to touch them. We know that to be absent from the body is to be present with the Lord. And so, God, we know where he is, and so, we just ask right now for those that are still dwelling upon this land, God, that you would give them comfort and put your arms around them. God, give them peace during this season and during this time. And, God, we'll be forever grateful, thankful. We give you all the kingdom, honor, and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. I want to ask Commissioner Edwards, if he would, to lead us in our pledge. Thank you, sir. Tonight, Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. There's no changes. I seek a motion of approval, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards, I mean, by Commissioner Mason, and seconded by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Pass is four to zero. Thanks. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that will allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you will, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes. Thank you so much.
This is in regard to the Cousins School. Is that on the agenda?
It's not. Well... It's... yeah, it's on the agenda.
Alright.
If you will, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Eileen Conley, 115 Dogwood Lane, Covington. This is in two parts, but it's both relative.
Three minutes. You want to work.
It's a duty of any city or county to provide services, one of which is fire protection. Firefighters, career, or volunteer are all threat responders and need to be widely dispersed so they can respond as quickly as possible and have enough staffing to do their job safely. Many cities and counties have a combination of career and volunteer firefighter to accomplish this. According to ISO and NFPA standard, ISO credits three volunteers as equivalent to one-on-duty, full-time career firefighter. According to NFPA, ISO recommends an average of 167 full-time firefighters per 100,000 citizens. Last I've heard, we had over 110,000. The city's responsible for some of those. ISO does not give issue credits per the ISO office. ISO requires one full year of response records as a critical part of any audit. Had the volunteers been added to the ranks of our career firefighters, we wouldn't have this situation now. There's actually an NFPA standard that recommends recruiting volunteers to provide the manpower and skills needed. Newton County runs them off. During this time that the volunteers were not allowed to respond, fire protection was definitely jeopardized. Career firefighters are overburdened and definitely underpaid. They're doing a job that used to be accomplished by dozens of firefighters, mostly volunteers. If training was an issue with the volunteers, why weren't night classes or weekend classes offered to ensure that they were in compliance? The county fire chief had the power to direct or determine any training needs. The volunteers are under his jurisdiction. Your interest in resolving the homeowners problem appears to have been abandoned in lieu of the renovations for Cousins School. If your interest is sincere to help citizens, there's a logical solution. But firstly, we understand that by the time these new fire stations are established and functioning, that we're probably looking at least a year or more. Then using ISO's criteria for one year of response records, we're now looking at probably two years. But there will still be areas unprotected outside of five-mile radius, and the ISO rating probably won't change. Thus, a need for pragmatic solution. I implore you to hear my proposal. You're considering approving millions into the money pit of Cousins School. How many times are we going to purchase and renovate it at taxpayers' expense? County offices are at the suggested occupants, but no discussion has been made of why they need to be relocated there. So I suspect it's only to justify the renovation. If that money was used to establish more fire stations, then everyone in the county would be covered, and consequently, a lower ISO rating possibly followed by the public securing lower insurance premiums. Also, increase the career firefighter's income to a living wage so that they don't have to go to other counties for better pay and more firefighters.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you approve this renovation, it's obvious that the cost will fall on the taxpayers who are already under hardships trying to pay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm not through. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, can we have a copy of that for the record, please? Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Guys, I want to be very respectful. I don't want to disrespect anybody. So please be mindful that we have three minutes to make comments. So please, ma'am, please, sir, be reminded that we have three minutes. Thank you, sir, for being here. Would you please state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name is Sam Hay, H-A-Y. I live on Malcolm Road in Newton County, Georgia. Did any of you Commissioners get an email from me today? Anybody? I'm pretty sure they were sent. Well, I'm not here to praise Caesar. So many, so many things are going on. And you will receive a copy of that email sooner or later and in some greater detail than what I'm going to say tonight. Tommy Craig and his co-conspirator, Buddy Welch, the county attorney for Henry County, have moved the county lines from Henry County into Newton County, across the river. The purpose of that was to try to stop the Thomas Brothers from building a reservoir. So what I want you all to do is to take note of this, have the county attorney look at it. I've already asked for information by open records. This needs to be approved by the Commission before it can happen. It needs to be approved by the legislature and neither the clerk for either one of the...
Sir.
Senate.
Can you... which item are you addressing on the agenda? Agenda topics only?
Which item on the agenda?
Yes.
Well, I've got just a few things that I want to get out at once. I don't come here very often. I'm through with that one. Let's talk about the city according to disassociating itself from some of these major projects, not the least of which...
Listen, listen, listen. We got to talk about agenda topics only. So if you want to talk about one of the items that's on the agenda, you can. Now, if you want to talk about that, you can do that at the end of the meeting tonight.
Well, I want to know why none of y'all attended the meeting with the city last night.
Sir.
They invited everybody.
Sir, if you would like to talk about, again, and I think this is my last time saying this, if you would like to talk about any topic on this agenda, you feel free.
Okay, can we talk about the same thing this lady just talked about?
The fire station?
The fire station.
You sure can. Yes, sir.
I think you just found your new fire chief. This lady and myself seem to be on the same page.
Okay.
With the information that she's got and the information that I got, it's hard to believe that Lloyd Kerr got his facts wrong. But if somebody told him we were going to get a credit, he needs to have that in writing. Because when I checked with ISO, they said there's no such thing as a credit. Okay? Now, to go a little bit farther on that particular issue, I would have to, if I was on this Commission, and I knew what he had done on this issue, not only relative to closing fire stations, but getting rid of volunteers and allowing that to happen, I would have to make a motion to terminate Mr. Kerr tonight. You got the facts. You know he messed up. And what are you going to do? Reward failure? You going to continue to reward failure? I would call, if you're panicked about who's going to take his place, I'd hire Billy Bushill as an interim until I could find somebody that knew what they were doing to put in permanently. Do you know how many firemen we're supposed to have according to ISO? 167 for every 100,000 people. Do you know how many firemen we've got? Less than a dozen? What are we thinking? Are you in charge of the fire chief? All right, somebody's disaster in the making. And I just want to hand these out, and I'll go away.
Anyone else want to make comments tonight? Yes, sir. Hold, hold, hold on. Sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board. My name's John Anglin. Address 123 Mitchell Road. That's Covington, Georgia. I'm the chairman of the Newton County Recreation Commission. Let me start by saying, when I first took the position, I was told just follow the bylaws and enforce policies and procedures. That sounds easy enough, right? Also heard that because we are volunteers, this isn't important to us. We just show up once a month and try to make tough decisions. Tough decisions like changing job descriptions and reorganizing the rec department. And then you lose good people because they weren't rehired. That's a tough decision. You can't take those decisions lightly. We decided to remove the adult program because of lack of participation. Another very tough decision that we did not take lightly. We also decided to pass a pay increase, which turned into a salary adjustment. That was not a good decision by the Board. We went about this process incorrectly. But several of those employees have been through a lot. And honestly, they had other options. And we wanted to support them the best that we knew how. And as the chairman, I supported it. But again, we went about that process incorrectly. Yes, we're an inexperienced Board. Better yet, we, or maybe I should say "I," sometimes are naive. Maybe I, moving forward, would always do my due diligence. Let me say, more due diligence than I have done. We support our current staff, the athletes, and the citizens of this great county. We support you so much that we'll continue to do this for free. We accomplished great things in 2019. Alternative activities, options from running clubs to yoga to ceramics. We now have a dog park at Turner Lake, about to do a ribbon cutting at Denny Dobbs. We anticipate some more great things in 2020. Adult options, upgrade to the website. How can we increase enrollment while making the athletes in the parks safe? So, community, I challenge you to come to the community involvement. We had three people last time, but you go on Facebook and complain. Board, I implore you to vote at what you see as best for the community, for the athletes and the citizens. Whatever you see as best, but I implore you not to do that out of political pressure or fear. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please, sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
Dontori Henderson, 40 High Ridge Road. I was one of those employees that Chairman was speaking of that was let go. But I want to come up here and state why. Why I think there should be a dissolution. Because I think the way we were let go was classless. It was less than 60 days before Christmas. And they took us in a little room and not even a thank you or anything. And it was just, I was handed a letter and told, and sun on my way. So to see, and during Christmas, I'm a father of five. So while I'm struggling during Christmas, to see Tannard pocketing $6,000, very disheartening. So I ask you all that there's no doubt, that there needs to be changes. Because I don't think that is the Newton County way. I don't think everybody on that Board is from Newton County. But what are we doing? We getting rid of fellow citizens. So I just, there absolutely needs to be changes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we're going to go into our zoning session. Mr. Judy, if you would, ma'am. Please come on. If you would, take your time. We got two minutes. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioners. This evening, we have two zoning requests before you. Both are future land use map amendment requests. The first request before you is FLU 19-000003. The existing future land use map on the property is currently... I apologize. The existing future land use map on the property is currently residential, as shown here in this picture, located in a yellow color. The request is to take the property from residential and place a future land use map amendment to commercial. The zoning would remain the same, which is R2 residential. The property is located at 90 Oak Hill Road and is approximately 3.99 acres in size and is located in District 2. The intent of the future land use map amendment is to allow the map to be changed from residential to commercial in order to seek a rezoning to establish mini warehouses on the property. The character area and policies, it's located in the Oak Hill Road area. The staff's analysis shows commercial development has taken place in this portion of the Oak Hill character area before and since the adoption of the current comprehensive plan. And the trends toward general and neighborhood commercial development in this area is planned to continue. The project site is located in the following Oak Hill character area and is correlated with the following appropriate land uses and policies. Land uses and policies would be agricultural, residential, office institutional, commercial, parks and recreation, and conservation. The vision for the future in Oak Hill is to have a sense of community forged through high-quality education, local jobs, better quality homes, aesthetic standards, and family-oriented activity centers with some commercial development which is lacking in the area. If you'll look at the map before you this evening, circled in red is the actual area in which the future land use is being sought. It is just south of the Salem Road, I mean, the Salem overlay district, which is shown up there in that bright pink color. It also is surrounded by other future land use map changes. Next door is King's Towing. Across the corner from it is Family Dollar. We also have some other commercial uses such as a convenience store and all this, right within a tenth of a mile from the location of the property. Again, the property shown is highlighted in blue. Right north on the Highway 81 side, that property is currently zoned, the future land use, not zone, the future land use currently shows as commercial. And it does have a zoning of highway commercial, which has no conditions on the property as it stands right now. So development could happen on the north parcel. The request is to take the bottom parcel, and they are seeking a future land use map. That's the only thing we're here tonight to discuss, is the future land use. And they're requesting that it be changed to commercial as well. Should this Board approve that change, then they would come back and seek a rezoning in order to establish mini warehouses on the property. And I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you may have. I would like to remind you, this was heard before your planning commission last month, and they did recommend unanimous approval.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions, guys, before we go into... Thank you. I want to take this opportunity now to open it up for our public hearing tonight. We allow the applicant and those that want to speak in favor. 10 minutes. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Those that want to speak in favor.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Greg Deemer, 55 Rosemont Parkway in Covington. I am the applicant seeking this land use map change. And as Judy has mentioned, my request on this is to combine the already existing commercial property with the two parcels, or exactly one parcel now, of residential into one so I can be in compliance with the minimum five-acre requirement for mini warehouse storage or a self-storage facility. My storage facility will only have one entrance. That'll be off of Highway 81. There will be no exit entrances or exits off of Oak Hill when the roads don't support that. I'll have one. From what I've been, what I've had understood is that the Newton County has given out or issued a lot of single-home build permits. So with the analysis report that I paid pretty good money to have the analysis done of the area, it shows that they're lacking in what is needed for self-storage in that area, the closest being almost, well, a little over five miles away from it. And of course, and most people don't know this, but the clientele sought by an owner of a facility such as myself is a five-mile radius. So there's nothing to the south, and there's, the rest of the storage facilities are up along the I-20 corridor, up there along the other roads up there. So that's what I'm actually seeking for, seeking tonight, is to get the land use changed. And that's all I have. So if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them for you.
Any questions, Commissioner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else want to speak in favor? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes also for those that want to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight?
My name is Clay Ivy. I live at 3085 Highway 81 South. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'm speaking on behalf of several of us who live in the area where they want to do the rezoning. Some of them are here, some of them cannot be here. We have concerns about this property. He's already requested a buffer change. We have an ordinance that requires a certain amount of buffer for this type of facility. He's already asking for a buffer change, which already starts setting the scale to make changes in the county, not just for his property, but everyone else is going to come forward and want all these changes made. Some of the concerns that we have, and I know that, I've done a little bit of research, so I know that even though traffic is not part of what you look at in a rezoning, he has mentioned that traffic is not a problem in that area that it hasn't increased over the last 20 years. Anyone who ever travels Highway 81 will know that's not the truth. The state has spent $2.7 million to do a roundabout just up the road for it to handle the traffic. In the last two weeks, we've had two major accidents right there in that same area where he's wanting to put these warehouses, which shows there is a drastic change in traffic, not for the good, but for the worse of what we need over there. But part of our concerns is the value of our property. We just want to build a mini warehouse, and that already is not a, is not the aesthetics that you'd want in a neighborhood that you live in. The people that live there, including myself, we've lived there for many years. There's always been a farm, a farmland right there. Like I said, we've all grown up in that same area, and we're not opposed to growth. In fact, it originally had part of it rezoned already. A guy wanted to do a cabinet shop. We didn't oppose him. He wanted to put a cabinet shop up front, his house in the back, so we know that he would keep it clean, keep it neat. It wouldn't have been a problem out there. So we didn't have a problem with that. We didn't come in and voice any opposition for that. And on the mini warehouses, as you all know, crime is continuously increasing in Newton County, and hopefully sooner or so down. But we already have storage facilities throughout the county. One of the closest ones over there is one called People Storage, which is over on Salem Road. It has about 500 units over there, and only half of them are full. So there's not a need for more storage facilities when you know that they're not being filled, the ones that are out there now. But in the crime that occurs at these things, just so y'all know, I am in law enforcement, so I'm very familiar with how crime works in these type of areas. And under the uniform crime reporting, the way that works is when you have a group of buildings like that, every building that gets broken into counts as a burglary. And whenever people go and burglarize these places, they don't just hit one unit. They hit multiple units. I have several that I passed out at the planning meeting that showed them the different ones that has occurred that made the news. And of course, they all don't make the news. In fact, last week in Conyers, I think, we had 17 at one particular storage facility. That counts as 17 burglaries in that location. It don't count as one. Each individual unit counts as a burglary. For us, the value of our land as far as the tax base goes may not see a decrease, but if we ever want to sell our houses, they're going to pull up crime data, and it's going to show all these burglaries that have happened right there where we live, and it's going to make the value of our property go down. We don't want our property value to go down. The gentleman that's trying to get this approved, he doesn't live in that area. He lives across, I guess, in the same district, but then off of Salem Road, off of Spring Road area, which is not something that's going to be in his problem to worry about when the value of the property starts going down. That we have concern of. We don't want our property values to decrease over a mini storage building. I think that's about all I have to tell you right now about all that. If you have questions about that, it'll be... If y'all have questions about that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that we have or any concerns that we have. So we don't want our value to go down. We'd like for y'all to look at it that way. We don't want to lose our property values. We're all longtime residents of Newton County for our, I guess all of us our entire life that lived there, so.
Any question, guys? Thank you, sir. Anyone else that want to oppose tonight?
Good evening. My name is Raymond Ivy, and I joined this property, the young man who wanted to put this mini warehouses on. But it's not necessarily just what he's saying I heard mentioned earlier from this lady sitting over here about. They need parks and recreation for children. Oak Hill has dent jobs out there, that is Oak Hill Community, and it's a very big facility. And as my brother said, that is my brother, he lives on joining property in mind. We've got plenty of mini warehouses surrounding that area out there. So I just want, you know, as far as the development and children planning and stuff like that, there's plenty out there for kids to do already. And mini warehouse is not a place that you're going to bring your kids to enjoy a day out. You know, it's just eyesore and trash and everything else. Any question?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that want to oppose tonight? Anyone else want to oppose? Thank you, that portion of our public hearing is closed. Oh, okay. Commissioner Mason? Do you have a question? Ms. Judy? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to ask, because I heard that, you know, changing the future land use of this particular property, and I'm just wanting to know if changing the future land use of this property, just doing this tonight, would that decrease property value for citizens around that particular area?
The future land use is not a use of land. It is simply a layer that lays on top that says the Board of Commissioners, or the county, or the planning staff envisions the community is changing in such a way that we are setting it up as a placeholder potentially for development to come in one way or the other. And actually, this evening, your jobs commissioners are not to debate whether or not a certain type of zoning or use on the land is appropriate, but whether or not there is evidence to support the future land use map to be amended on this property. And in your staff report, there are findings that we're required to supply back to you. And those questions are: whether the map amendment is suitable in view of the use and the development of adjacent and nearby properties; number two, whether the map amendment will adversely affect the future or usability of adjacent or nearby properties; number three, whether the map amendment is in conformity with the character area and the general policies and intent of the future land use plan; and number four, whether there are other existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property or the area which gives supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval of the map amendment. So the map amendment will do nothing other than serve as a placeholder for potential requests to come before you in the future, or it can just sit like this residential has been on this property since the zoning was placed on the property in nineteen seventy-one. So this property has, if this property, because it is R2, it cannot be used for farmland either. That is not a legal use. The only thing right now those two properties could be used for would be single-family residential development.
And so with that being said, we're not deciding tonight what's going to be on the land, we're only deciding the usage of the land and...
You're not, right, you're not deciding the zoning. If someone wanted to come back before you, the same way as the property to the north there amended its future land use to commercial, then that property came back before this board for a rezoning, and that was for a cabinet shop, but the zoning was placed on the property without conditions. So on that first four acres there, any business that is allowed in the CH zoning district already has a right to go there. However, that's not enough land for the use in which the applicant tonight would like to seek in the future. But your decision tonight has nothing to do with the value of the land, nor, it is just a placeholder, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to go back down that path.
Yes, ma'am.
So the properties in the, in the area, there are already properties that are zoned that are already future land use map, commercial, as well as zoned commercial.
Correct, yes, ma'am, I'm trying to get...
So we're not setting a precedent by this being inconsistent with what is already in the surrounding area.
Correct, Brian, I'm so sorry, Brian. Correct, and I apologize, I went in the wrong direction here. But if you'll look at this map, this is immediately within a quarter-mile. Immediately, the property to the north that adjoins this, its future land use already shows commercial. There's a property to the southwest that is commercial and vacant. There's a property to the northwest that is where the Family Dollar is. There are properties that are a little further, oh, good lord, I'm going in the wrong direction, my apology. Just to let you know, there are properties that are further north where you have the intersection of Highway eighty-one and Salem Road. You have the convenience store that's right there where Oak Hill turns off of Highway eighty-one, and then you have some other commercial zonings that are a little further down near the, I think it's the middle school perhaps that's down there. So there are existing, furthermore, the property that directly adjoins this property is King's Towing, and even though its future land use shows as residential, it is a legal, non-conforming towing yard.
So if we were to approve this tonight for the future land use map, and the applicant wanted to establish mini warehouses, the procedure would be that the applicant would then have to apply for a zoning change?
Yes, ma'am.
Would have to go through the zoning change with all the, or the request for a zoning amendment? Would it be a variance, or would it be a zoning change?
It is a zoning map amendment. The applicant does have a current variance going before the BCA. In mini warehouses, our ordinance requires not only a minimum of five acres of land, we also have a restriction that says you must provide a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot perimeter buffer. That is not a buffer against a different use, that is completely taking a hundred-and-fifty feet of your surrounding property off, and what you have left is the amount of land in which you could construct mini warehouses. None of the existing warehouses that are currently built in Newton County abide by that one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer. So he does have a variance, but that has no bearing on the future land use map amendment. That does have a bearing on whether or not he would be able to develop the property, and should this future land use move forward, then he would have to obtain his variance as well as obtain a rezoning before he could do any use on the property.
And all of those would go back before planning and zoning?
Yes, ma'am.
Not necessarily come before us?
Correct, the rezoning will come before you. The only reason a variance would come before this board is if someone was not satisfied with the decision, whether that be the applicant, if the applicant was denied, or whether that be someone impacted that has the right to appeal the decision of the BCA.
But he has to do both steps.
Yes, ma'am.
So at least he's going to come back before this board.
Yes, ma'am, there, he could not, the only property right now that has the right to develop is that north property that's already zoned CH, but there is not enough land to develop mini warehouses, but there are other commercial uses that could by right go there right now.
Thank you, anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Judy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we are only focusing on the future land use of this particular property, I'd like to make a motion to approve FLU one-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-three.
It's a motion by Commissioner Mason that we approve, and then second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four to zero. Thank you so much. Ms. Judy, please.
Our next request is also a future land use map amendment. This is FLU nineteen-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-four. This property is located at one-zero-seven-zero-one, Highway thirty-six. It is located in District Five, and its current future land use map is residential. It is surrounded by MXC in the, in our zoning district, which is a mixed-use commercial, and across the street from the property is surrounded by the city of Covington, of which also has a commercial, or a mixed-use zoning in that area as well. This property actually came before this board a handful of years ago, when the previous property owner deannexed the property from the city. When the, when she sought a deannexation, at that time, we could hear both the future land use map amendments and the zonings at the same hearing. And her desire was to take the property, because there was not an established use on it, and be able to decrease the taxes that she was paying at the time. So she sought for us to go simply residential with both the future land use and with the zoning on the property. I encouraged her to go to the mixed-use commercial, as this property, it sits on the Highway thirty-six side of where Piper Road, our public works facility is. So it is completely surrounded by obviously non-residential uses. The planning commission did also hear this, and they did recommend a unanimous approval. So the request tonight is to take this from a residential future land use and to change it into the MXC, which is mixed-use commercial for the property.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you. We'll take this opportunity to open it up for those that, the applicant, and those that want to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please, sir, state your name, your name, your address for the record, please.
Jared Rutberg, eight-one-eight-three Wood Street, Covington. How y'all doing tonight?
Great.
It's pretty simple, we're just trying to get the future land use map straightened out so that it matches what's surrounding it. I do intend on going to the next step after that, which will be to rezone all three parcels, because I own the two parcels to the north, and get that rezoned to commercial. So I am volunteering to pay more taxes, which I know you guys like hearing, but it's pretty straightforward. If anybody's got any questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions, guys? Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Thank you, that portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. If you want to oppose tonight, you should come at this time, state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose? If anyone wants, anyone want to oppose? Thank you, that portion of our public hearing is also closed. Which district is it? Five.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of FLU one-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-four.
It's a motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four to zero, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Judy. We're going to flip back over to the chairman's report. Tonight, we have an update from the JDA. Sarah Hall and Mr. Jerry Sivio, guys, if you would, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank y'all for having us tonight. It's a Happy New Year. We haven't seen y'all since the New Year, and so a lot of great things happened at the end of two thousand and nineteen, getting ready for two thousand and twenty. So I know we have a lot of great things to cover, but we're going to be brief. But one of the great things that we were able to attend and join into with our partners at Takeda was SUSH Japan, the southeastern United States Japanese alliance that was held in Savannah, Georgia. Members of the Joint Development Authority went and represented our community, as well as members of Takeda, were there, and so we were very excited to really collaborate and understand relations that we have with our Japanese partners, and really be a support there for Takeda as well. Along with that, you will see in the first quarter coming up for the JDA is a new website. The Joint Development Authority has been working for a while on deciding whether or not the website should be formed with the JDA, or should it be Stanton Springs, or should it be some combination of two, and they have finally decided that it'll be StantonSprings.com. So we are actively working and establishing that right now, and you should see it the next time I come for an update. Along with that, prospects and details, we will show a video, you know, we love videos, and so we have a new one for you tonight, and we will show a video regarding what we're doing for prospects. The Parkway itself has been established and opened. We will have a grand opening probably coming in March, and at the end of that Parkway, we have a new eighteen-acre pad-ready site. And so that is cleared, ready to go for any prospect to come, we can land a helicopter on it, and so we're very excited about what that looks like and to lure in new potential prospects for that. As far as the discussion of our industries and what that looks like to you, Takeda's actively continuing to increase. We had a long, lengthy meeting with them recently about workforce development, and they're actively engaging our technical college partners, more heavily at Athens Tech and Georgia Piedmont Technical College, to round out their employment. And then, as you can see, if you go down to our Parkway at any time, Facebook is rapidly building, and hopefully will have their first building operational toward the end of summer. With that being said, they have a new guard gate in their box, so if you go, it's got their full address on it, and so they were very excited about that as well, too. And then beyond that, again, I think looking at the new Parkway, I'd advise you, take a trip down there, go see, you can actually go all the way around the cul-de-sac and then look for an invitation. I'll turn it over to Jerry.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. I'll talk about financial a little bit. The Parkway is a little over twenty-eight-hundred feet, and so a little more than half a mile. Fully graded pad, all of that has been funded in full from the two thousand and eighteen property sale proceeds. That's a good thing. Walton County collected two thousand and nineteen tax revenues from Takeda in the amount of just under a million dollars, specifically nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents, higher than projected because, due to slight increase in the millage rate. And that'll be distributed to the counties and school districts per the revenue-sharing agreement in March of this year. Newton County collected two thousand and nineteen tax revenues for the property located in Newton County, the portion of Stanton Springs, in the amount of eighteen-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents, which will also be distributed in March of this year. Facebook pilot payments will commence once the certificate of occupancies are issued for the first two buildings, and that could be as soon as two thousand and twenty-one. The payment amounts increase as each new building gets a CO, up to the five total buildings possible. So, you know, we'll be in the couple-of-million-dollar range coming in from Takeda and Facebook every year, and that will only go up, of course. So, and the JDA will adopt its July 2020 through June 2021 budget in February and March. We're working on that now, we have a meeting next week, and then try to conclude it before March is up, and then that'll be submitted to the counties. So other activities, the JDA continues to work with the counties to create a procedures manual regarding tax assessment, tax collection, and tax digest reporting under House Bill 406. And then activities anticipated in the first quarter 2020, this quarter, adopt and distribute the 2021, 2021 budget in March. Completion of the Parkway extension and ribbon cutting, which Sarah mentioned, updates to the website, Facebook activities continue. And again, I reiterate, on behalf of Sarah, you need to go out there and see that, this, this aerial you're going to see is, just doesn't do it justice. So if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them, otherwise, I guess it's showtime.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you both, Sarah and Jerry. So, correct me if I'm wrong, after the first Facebook CO is issued, we get pilot payments for all five, whether they're built or not?
Start with, sorry, you'll start with the first CO, the first CO conducts the first million dollars, and then every time you receive a CO, on top of that, it'll increase a million dollars each time. So with the incoming, it'll be, at the end, with their proposed buildings to build out, it'll be up to $5 million. And then it will accumulate on top of that each year. So when we hit 2 million, it'll say 2 million until you hit the next, and so forth.
Yeah, and I might add that even if they didn't build the other three buildings, the additional million dollars kicks in the sooner of five years.
That's correct, it's a schedule, so if they do not get to the CO before they hit that calendar date, you would receive the cost.
They're still committed. So I guess it would be 5 million?
That's correct.
By the end of 20 years, per year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Kirk?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, Sarah, that, those pilot payments are split or distributed among the four counties based on their participation, or based on the original agreement, which would be, we would get 37.5%, and I think Walton, 37, and so forth.
It's the revenue sharing agreement, and all of those will be done. And again, the CO, sorry, also to further clarification on that, the CO is all determined, whether it is the CO of the building, or based on the square footage, and the total, and when that comes in, and pilot payments also do not come in as regular tax dollars, it will come in at when it hits, and a different number. So it might look differently, or be in the middle of a budget cycle or not, so.
Is that also then shared by the school systems as well, correct?
I believe that is correct. I can check, and maybe with Marcus as well, too. So we want to show two videos, if there's no questions. First one's a quick one, but we also want to reference that this video was taking place last week, we did a visit, the governor recognized, sorry, the governor recognized 11 companies last week, they were Georgia-made companies, and one of the companies they recognized was Takeda's, out at, out at Stanton Springs, but he also recognized Bridgestone Golf, and we were the only community to actually have two industries recognized by the governor when he selected 11 companies for the first round. So it was an exciting day, and this was held at the Capitol. So it's exciting to see our industries get recognized, and we're excited for Takeda and Carlos and the team out there, so tell them congratulations, their products are Georgia-made. And then the next one is the Shire Parkway Extension. So again, all these videos are on YouTube, you can find these, and be able to share and link out, please share this, and it's an exciting moment, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I think that's all I have for the chairman's report, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to do at this time is to, with your permission, would be to ask the representatives from Malden Jenkins, our auditors, to come up and present the FY19 audit. They have to travel back to Macon tonight, and so I don't want to delay them any longer than we have to, and so, Mr. Edwards.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Let me ask this question, has management provided the caper to the commission at this point? So y'all have already had a chance to read it from cover to cover? You didn't read it? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not offended. I know I live in a different world from most people. Let me just hit the highlights, I know that's really what you probably like to hear. Number one, the theme I'm seeing right now from a financial standpoint is, one word, improvement. In the three years we've done your audit, it's amazing, truly, to see the improvement that we've seen in your financials. When we first got here back in 17, 18, you all were going through some tough times, you had a certain amount of litigation going on, a lot of different issues pulling at your purse strings, and things were kind of tough, things were kind of lean. I'm happy to say that you all have made a turn, and it's a good place to be. I don't want you to feel too braggadocious about it all. I mean, I think you're, you've made a good positive turn, but I think there's still room for improvement. I, I think that needs to be the continuing theme. Improvement is what we've seen, and I think improvement's where we need to go. When you look at this overall entity, y'all are a pretty large operation, besides just having the Board of Commission, that you all manage, all the primary government operations of the county, you've got other places that are part of the umbrella of what's included in this financial report, your Department of Public Health, your Recreation Commission, your Water and Sewer Authority, just to name a few. Your IDA is in there, you know, you add it all up, you're almost a half a billion dollars worth of assets. Now that's not cash, I don't want everybody to think, oh, we got the money at our disposal. It's a lot of infrastructure, there's a lot of things involved, but you've got a huge operation here. When you look at the overall operations of what this county is about, you have about 135 million in revenues coming through the door here. Again, that includes these component units, like the Water and Sewer Authority, Rec. Commission, all these different parties rolled up. The county itself, the county commission, you all took in about 110 million, roughly, in top operations, your general fund was in the 60s, as far as what it was. Your SPOSS had a good year, you took in a pretty good chunk of change with the SPOSS, you didn't spend it all yet, but you've got it sitting there waiting to be spent on all the different things that you had as part of the referendum. Again, your, your different programs, your general fund, your SPOSS, your two big boys, and they're in great position right now. Your fund balance at the general fund, which is the heart and soul of every government, has just seen tremendous improvement the last couple of years. You've got, you heard me say earlier, about four months' worth of fund balance, I think I said that, maybe I didn't, but you've got about four months' worth of fund balance, you've got about 20 million dollars worth of fund balance, and a couple of years ago it was down around five. So, real quickly, in about three years, y'all have jumped this thing up. And some people may look at me and say, why in the world do we need to do that? Because you all have a lot of initiatives going on here, you've got a lot of proaction required by your community, and you've got to be postured, be able to have contingent reserves for two primary things, Mother Nature, when she strikes, and the economy. And, you know, we've all been hearing about the economy is due for another recession. I hope it is not going to happen anytime soon, but people say recessions happen every 10 to 12 years. Well, our last recession started around '08, so we were kind of pushing the button right now on where we are with the global economy. It's good for you all to be in a position right now to have grown your fund balance the last few years, so that you can continue to do the things that your constituency wants you to do, even during the lean times, if we had one of those two contingencies occur. It's a good place to be. I, I would say, while you've got four months' worth of general fund reserve right now, my goal, if I were in your shoes, and I'm looking at things as of June 30th, and that's real important to understand, when, when you take the snapshot, greatly depends on what you should look like, when you're at June 30th, you're in the middle of a cycle, you've got property taxes that aren't coming in for several months. Four months is what you've got right now. I'd love if you aimed for about six. If you had about six months in reserves at a June 30 year end, I do think you would be in a great position to go forward, and be able to weather most any storm that comes your way. Again, overall, very much the word improvement comes to mind. Large operation, something I don't want to miss out on, your general fund this year had a very good year on the budget side. You all actually took in about 3.5 million more in revenues than you'd budgeted, and guess what else you did? You spent about 3.5 less than what you had planned on spending. That gave you a nice, nice increase to your fund balance of about 7, 7.5 million dollars. That's a good place to be. Again, it takes those kind of commitments, those kind of efforts, to, to grow a fund balance, and, and you can definitely see that here. It's, it's again, a good place to be. That being said, I'm going to stop for a moment, because I know I might go off onto a tangent, and everybody sits there saying, what's he saying? So I'd like just entertain any questions that you all may have.
Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Well, absolutely.
I know some people that itching that their hands about to raise, and, and so I'm trying, I, I see two of them already, and so I'm just trying to give them opportunities, who's going to go first? We're going to let the ladies go first, Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I read this, and I, having been on board with Commissioner Henderson when we were in the really lean years, I was ecstatic to see where we are now.
It's a great place.
It was very, it was just such a relief to see how much progress we've made. That being said, you mentioned that you would like to see us at, at six months, which means that with our current fund balance policy, we would have to have a policy change, because we, our policy stays 15% to 22%, and our current policy, I mean, our current fund balance is at about 33.9%, so I guess what you're recommending is that we explore having a policy change.
I think you ought to explore it, I do. I mean, again, you're in the greater Atlanta area, and you think about the governments that you are familiar with, the Henry Counties next door that have just gotten AAA ratings, the Fayette Counties, the counties, again, that you're nearby, the Waltons, everybody that's growing like you are, most of them have a strong fund balance at June 30th, and stronger than what you've got. That's why I'm saying, improvement is definitely to be noticed, but if you want to continue to be like one of these other counties, and keep having these initiatives that you want to be able to do, like these other communities around you are doing, it takes fund balance to get there.
So that being said, I know that the 7 million that you mentioned, there, there are really four components to why we have that 7 million. One of them is, we had firefighters' positions that were unfilled, so.
Yes.
Once we fill those positions, and then we have a new fire station coming onboard, Station 8, and then potentially a new one, and that, how quickly we get that one onboard, there will need more firefighters there. So those, those savings may not be there in future years. We've put us, we've put extra contingency in this year, that helped. But the TAVT was higher than anticipated, and my question for you is, how much, have, do we need to rethink how we, how we project that TAVT? Because I know that there was a, we were told when we started the TAVT, we went from the birthday tax to the TAVT, that initially, we weren't going to see the relief, but then after a few years, it would kick in, and we, counties would see a lot more.
Right.
So are we at a leveling off point with the TAVT, or are we going to continue to see that incremental?
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that, I'm not an economist, I'm just a guy that counts the monies in a historical sense, but, you know, I think, if, if you feel like that's something that needs to be looked at, then I think you ought to talk to management about that, and see if there is another way of looking at things. I think every day, we have to wake up and not do things the way we've always done it, and if it means that maybe there's a greater or lesser recognition of revenue, or expense for that matter, then we always need to kind of fine-tune what we're doing and what we're looking at. I think it's a reasonable thing to, to charge management with, to have them look into the experience, look at the history, and see if there's any kind of themes there, work with the Department of Revenue, and see if they can shed any light on it as well. It's, it's real hard to, to know exactly what the answer is, year to year.
I mean, I know that none of us want to be in a, we don't want to go back to the financial position where we were in 2012, 2014.
Right.
That was just miserable. But we also don't want to be greedy.
I agree.
And take more than, I mean, it's taxpayer money.
It is.
So we just need to be in that sweet spot, where we're providing the services that they need, but not being oversell.
I, I agree with that entirely. While I sit here and say, let's try to continue to improve, we've always got to be sensitive to all those type of things that you're talking about there. It's, it's not an easy job to figure out how to best grow and, and sustain in a county or a city, there's no doubt about it.
I got Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when you mention, when you mention, mention the word improvement, do you, looking through all the data, does, does it seem to you that's, that's a, a product of internal, internal controls, improved internal controls, policy, I mean, what are you?
I wouldn't say internal controls. Internal controls are really looking at, are we, are we dotting i's and crossing t's, and we, are we making sure that we're safeguarding our assets? That's really what internal control's about. I do think what it demonstrates to me is that your people at different levels of management, starting at the top, by the way, I think improvement like this is a trickle-down effect, starting with the board, and their policies, and their culture trickling down, but it looks to me like you've got some good management overall, that are taking a responsible approach to addressing the revenues and the expenses, and trying to be cognizant of the ultimate goal is to improve our situation, and not find ourselves in a 2012 situation. Imagine going back to what you said about being in 2012, imagine if we're in a 2012 situation, and we do have a global recession. Now what do we do? And that's the kind of thing that's not always easy for everybody to understand and to justify the things I'm thinking, but we have to put ourselves in a position to be able to weather the storms that are going to be out there. And I, I think what I'm seeing is just people with a good pulse at management. I know that your finance department, just over the last couple of years, has improved tremendously. You know, the people that we work with seem to have a real good grasp of what's going on. That's, that's quite good, to have that situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henderson, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just thank you for your work, you and your staff have, have did for us.
Thank you.
I'm very impressed with what I heard, from what I've heard. Second off, I just got this thing today, so I couldn't, I couldn't have, uh, went through it in that limited amount of time. Question I want to ask is, you mentioned Henry County had a AAA rating. What is our rating?
Not exactly sure.
It's double A B, I believe, is what our rating is.
So I guess my fourth question, last question is, how can we get a AAA rating?
Well, a AAA rating takes into a lot of things. It's not just looking at the local government and its financial situation, that plays a role, but you have to look at everything, you look at the economy in the general area, you have to look at all those kind of things that go into the grand study about, is Newton County a place that has the ability to sustain and grow and do very well? You think about the places that we have in Georgia that are AAA rating. You think about the places that we have in Georgia that are AAA rated. Um, Henry County just became that. Forsyth County has been that. City of Sawani, City of Roswell, City of Alpharetta. You know, as I named some of those places, we all drive there. We've all been there, and there's a lot of things going on besides just the local government itself, just what else is going on commercially and residentially with the community. So, it's a big picture perspective. Uh, but you, you know, there certainly aren't gonna give AAA rating to a government that may have all kinda great things around it. But if the government itself is suffering, then, yeah, that's really all you can control in some respects, is, is that.
And this question, Lloyd, have we ever had a AAA rating?
I, I don't know for sure, Commissioner. I can try to find out, but I don't know.
I, I can offer this to you. I've been in this career now, I'm in my thirty-fourth year. And for the longest time, in Georgia, there were only two counties that were AAA rated, Gwinnett and Cobb. Uh, Henry County and, and Forsyth County joined that rike in the last couple of years. But for the longest time, only two of our one hundred and, what do we got? One hundred and fifty-nine counties, only two were AAA rated. And that's for the majority of my career. So, I doubt, just saying that, unless we go back to nineteen sixty-five or something, I don't know what Newton County might have been. And, well, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just, uh, wanted to correct what I said earlier. I misspoke. It's a double A three, not double A B. I'm sorry, is our rating, double A three.
So, we wanna, we wanna make sure we get to that AAA rate.
Yeah. Well, I think it should be a goal. I mean, a, a reasonable goal. But I, again, I, I, I understand what the other commissioner was saying earlier about, you know, we've gotta be sensitive, and you do. It's not something you can just do overnight. It takes a long-term commitment to making this happen. But if I'm in your shoes, that's somewhere I'd like to be someday. No doubt.
Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have a question. Um, this is going, this upcoming budget season is gonna be my second bu, uh, budget as a commissioner. And so, you know, I really learned some things last year when it comes to budgeting the county. And so, I'm looking forward to going through this next budget season to really grasp this concept even more. And so, I just wanted to say, thank you so much for the work that you've done. And I appreciate the positive feedback showing that we are, um, the trajectory of where we're going, uh, is in a positive direction.
It definitely is.
And so, I'm excited and I'm thrilled about where we're going and where we're headed. And I'm just look forward to continuing that momentum um, so that we can be in a position to provide those things, uh, services for our citizens as we continue to grow from a very, very rapid perspective. So, thank you so much.
Got a quick question. Uh, because I know, uh, I know it's probably some people thinking about it right now, so might as well go ahead and get it out there. Um, so if, if we were, if we did a rollback, um, how would that help us and how would that hurt us as far as trying to reach our goal of getting to that six months? Um, six months of income?
I think management would have to look into that question more specifically. Look at the rollback, look at what values are, are currently doing. Um, I don't have that knowledge right now to be able to answer that question authoritatively. But again, I think you could probably get with Lloyd or get with Brittany or someone and start asking that kinda question to look into what would be the effect, good or bad.
So, um, would you say, we, would you say that we need to stay on pace of what we're doing now?
I would say so.
You would say so?
I think you, I think you, you've had a good several years now, about three years in a row, that you've seen some, some serious improvement. If you could do it again without it costing the public the services and those kinda things that you mentioned earlier, I think that's the goal that I would have. But, you know, again, I, I'm, I'm a long-term thinker. I'm not trying to make you all AAA in one year. This is not gonna take years of sustaining good, positive, uh, results. And that means positively serving your people and positively growing the community and positively affecting everything. And so, you know, I think you've made some really good strides the last several years. It's a great start to such a goal. But this is gonna take years to get there the right way.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions, guys? Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
You did a great job. Thank you. You thank our financing.
Absolutely.
And thank our county managers as well for the great job that they have you guys did as well. So, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I, Mr. Chairman, we've, I've got a few photos we just wanted to go through here under, uh, my report. Um, a couple of things here. Uh, you see our, uh, population. We've had three new hires and fourteen separations over the last month. Um, total population's six eighty-two. Um, we are staying abreast, a little bit ahead on the residential uh, than where we were at the same time, uh, last year. Um, and we're staying, uh, abreast of where we were with commercial from this time last year. Next, please. Uh, you see the, uh, work orders by district. Um, we are, um, uh, doing quite a bit of dirt road work right now. Um, we're trying to get caught up on those. I know that's been raining a lot, and it's, we've had several calls, and we're doing our best to try to get to as many of those as we possibly can. Um, you see the LMIG, uh, the twenty-twenty LMIG projects, uh, we're starting, uh, already. We've been doing some milling and so forth. Um, a couple of pictures, groundbreaking. This was at the Animal Services, um, building. And you can see all the folks there had quite a crowd. Uh, that was on January twenty-ninth. Uh, next slide, please. And, um, the new election equipment, as you know, that have all been here, our elections office has been conducting, pardon me, training sessions uh, in various parts of the community. And there are machines that are set up in the elections office so that if the public would like to familiarize themselves with the machines, feel free to do so. Um, the fire services awards were held on the twenty, on, uh, January thirty-first. Uh, special recognition, we wanted to identify David Turley. Um, he was involved in a life-saving, uh, incident where there was a fifteen-month-old child, I believe it was, that was choking on a ball bearing. Um, firefighter Turley, uh, was able to go in and calm the situation and take the baby and was able to save that baby. And he's been nominated, um, for a lifesaver's award for the, um, our district here in Georgia. So, and I think that banquet comes up in, uh, March, I believe is the time. And there are others, Fire Apparatus Operator of the Year, Chris Calhoun, Officer of the Year, Justin Holmes. Um, and so, next slide, please. Um, and of course, we did recognize all of the in, the individuals who were, um, our, uh, at the, uh, at the banquet and thanked them for all of their service and their families for their, um, for their help and for their support with the firefighters. Newton County Government Go On One had its first meeting, uh, on, uh, February the sixth, I believe. And, um, we had a, a, a small number of people there, but the, the, the weather was kinda bad that night. But you see the other ones are scheduled March fifth, April second, May seventh, June fourth, and July second, and we invite all the public out to, to join us there. You'll see we had, uh, Judge Bell, our clerk, Ms. Hayes, and Sheriff Brown there were addressing the, the guests, the people from the community there. Um, next slide. Uh, and also, we had an interesting event that went on at the courthouse on Valentine's Day. Had a total of fifty-seven weddings, and this is some of the pictures, uh, from some of those weddings. Um, Judge Bell, Judge Branch, and Judge Wells all performed those marriages. Um, so. And, um, then, um, those are, you see the judges and, um, that is, uh, the lady in the flower dress is one of the clerks that we have that work in the probate court. She and her husband there, who both, I believe, uh, her husband is a local attorney, and they had their vows renewed at the, uh, during that time as well. Um, Ashley Best is, uh, going to be our new, um, agricultural extension agent. And we're having a community meet and greet March the third from five to seven over at Turner Lake. So, we wanna, uh, invite all of our agriculture community and just anybody that utilizes extension office services, um, all over the county. They do quite a bit now with, uh, various types of horticulture. And, you know, most of us have, um, farms that are made out of grass. So, and they have a lot, we have good information for that. But she'll be here, and, uh, she can, it's just an opportunity for you to meet and talk with her. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we got one more.
Yeah, just a, a quick update. Um, the lifesaver award was, uh, Chris Calhoun. And, um, Chief has just informed me that he received the state honor for that this evening, about ten minutes ago? About thirty minutes ago, he was named the state lifesaver award, and it was Chris Calhoun.
Thank you, Chief. My apologies.
Uh, thank you, sir. We have great firefighters. Thank you. Um, if nothing else, we're gonna go down to, uh, number eight here. Uh, Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Chairman Baines. At our last meeting, um, there were some questions about the creation of a public facilities authority. And as you all recall, there was some question about whether or not the county had previously created a public facilities authority. Um, so, we did go back and take a look at that, um, and to kinda give you the history there. Uh, many years ago, the county did do some borrowing for, uh, public facilities through a nonprofit, five oh one C three. Um, that entity has been dissolved by the state. Um, as such, we, in item number eighteen, are proposing the creation of a public facilities authority now. And we will take that to the local delegation. But just to update you all, it was a committee that answered to the five oh one C three and was not unauthorized. So, we'll be moving forward with creating that.
Thank you. Any questions on that, guys? Uh, Commissioner Schultz and then Commissioner Henderson.
Um, don't we have appointees on that committee right now? So, what will happen to those appointees?
Well, um, since that was administratively dissolved by the state for non-payment, um, they could meet as much as they'd like, but there's, there's not an entity there legally.
Nothing for them to do. So, do we need to inform them?
Yeah.
Right. But, but they need to be informed that their committee is divorced.
I'm sure, Ms., Ms. Jack, send out an email. Thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, our Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where is, um, if, if they were acting on be, on behalf of the counties, as, uh, thank, uh, now, county attorney just mentioned, then we, we are somewhat, uh, giving the, I guess, uh, go-ahead. So, is this new authority? And we, when, is it gonna be, I mean, is it gonna be similar to the, uh, one of this meeting?
Um, after looking at what that committee was working on, yes. It will look very much like that. It's a funding mechanism so we can get lower interest.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I understand that. But what I'm saying, are we go individually of an apartment or is something that?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is item number nine. Would you consent agenda? I seek a motion of approval, please. Okay. Seek a motion, please. Is the motion, uh, can I get a second? Okay. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Mason. Um, in a discussion? All in favor? It passed three, what, three zero, one is, uh, one is receded. Next is item number ten, finance. It's Brittany.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting the January twenty-twenty financials. So, as of January, we are seven months into our fiscal year. So, we should be looking to aim around fifty-eight percent of our budget for the year. It helps to turn things on. Okay. All right. So, so far for the year, we are at eighty-four percent of our revenues, and that does sound high. But we do have to keep in mind that a majority of our property, our revenues are property taxes. And the property taxes are due here by December. So, we have collected a majority of our revenues this time of year. So, when you're looking at the numbers, things may look a little skewed this month. And so, year-to-date, we have collected fifty-eight million so far. And this is just a graph that depicts that. So, you can see property revenues generally flow in in November and January in the county 'cause we receive in finance December's revenue in January. So far for the year, we're at fifty-four percent of our expenditures. So, we are looking to be right on target with our expenditures for the year. And this is just a graph that depicts that as well. And this is just, uh, departmental, um, expenditures by department and the general fund. And that just shows what everybody has been spending. And everybody is pretty much on target to be where they are. The percent column to the very right does include encumbrances. So, if any department looks a little high, it's because that they do have encumbrance that aside for money they're planning to spend. And here shows our total revenues versus our expenditures for the year. And right now, we are twenty-one million over, um, revenues versus expenditures. But as I said earlier, that is to be expected this time of year. Enterprise funds, we're looking at, um, Water Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and Gaither Fund here. And they all are on target to be where they need to be. And as I've mentioned, I think every meeting, we have seen an, um, increase in revenues that came into gaithers due to filming. And then, Solid Waste and Water Fund are at sixty-six and sixty-three percent of their revenues. So, they're looking really good in their revenues this time of year. And everybody is looking good in their expenditures, too. Water Fund, thirty-eight percent. Solid Waste, fifty-one, and Gaithers at forty-six. Two thousand five SPOSS, as I've mentioned before, we're just continuing to pay off the oh-six cops debt. So, we don't really have any activity going on right there until we make our, um, biannually payments. Two thousand eleven SPOSS, we are working on transportation. Roads is finishing up some projects, the historic jail, Fire Station Eight. And then, the Fire Station Services Equipment just has a little bit of money left in that fund. Two thousand seventeen SPOSS, we are, um, as mentioned before, our bonded projects weren't really getting started in the construction phase of that. So, we should be moving pretty rapidly with getting those, um, completed hopefully pretty soon. And then, as far as our revenues go, we collected December revenues in January. So, we collected one point three eight. So, that was pretty significantly about two hundred thousand more than what we're used to collecting. But keep in mind that it is the holidays, so your sales tax revenue is a little higher around that time. And so, so far, we've collected five point four million over what we haven't anticipated. Impact fee funds total for the year, we have collected one point five million. And this is our debt schedule. So, you have a better picture of this probably in your packet. It's the very last, um, page of your packet. But I just wanted to point out, on the open line, 'cause I can't really see that very well either. This lists all of our current debt by fund. So, you can see all of our current bonds that we do currently have right now. So, in the general fund, we do not currently have any bonded projects, but we do have a finance agreement and a Jifa loan. And we do have bonds, we have one bond, that the GO bond, which is our SPOSS two thousand seventeen where we bonded the SPOSS projects that we're, and we're only, we pay that off over five years. And we've already began making our first payments on that. And then, we do have a Georgia perimeter bond there. And then, the additional bonds that the county has out right now are both revenue bonds. So, we have one in the Water Fund. And then, we have the two thousand seventeen taxable and non-taxable bonds in the Solid Waste Fund. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, guys? Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
I'm not sure that, I, I talked with Brittany about this yesterday. Um, and so, my question goes on the debt burden somewhere. goes on the debt service somewhere, the ABM project. Do we have anything in terms of how we're, how we're actually, did they ever give us a report?
We, we did get one last year. I think you may recall that that particular report, based on the agreement, was actually, it was their first annual report. However, because of the construction period, it actually covered more than that. It was, I think, a year and a half. Their report indicated that they had saved us money in excess of what our guarantee was on the savings. The next report is due, I believe, in first of June. Was that, isn't that about right?
It was around June.
Yeah, May, I think is when they would complete it. April is when they do it. May is completed in May. And then, they have sent the report to us in June. So, we're, the next report won't be, we're anticipating receiving that around first of June.
So, how do we, how are we auditing those reports?
Well, what we did was to take a look at what our past bills were versus what our current was and the usage. And that is how that we compared what we did in previous years versus the subject year that they, that they audited. And we did it according to the basis that was in the contract or the calculation that was spelled out in the contract on how to do that, on how to obtain those numbers. Now, we can certainly do, if, if there's some concern about their numbers, then, pardon me, we can, and we'll do what we have done in the, what we did with the first one was go back and compare what we find versus what they find.
Okay, that's a substantial amount of payment that we have on that bond.
Yeah, yes. And it's, I think the bonds still are the, it's actually the financing on the, did you say? No. ABM was, actually, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, it'll be paid off in 2033.
I think we've got 12 or 13 years still left on that. So, certainly, they guaranteed $425,000 in savings over what the basis was that they established when they did their baseline data in 2015 or 16. So, they guaranteed that they would save us $425,000 off of, off of that. And then, it would be, but it's also adjusted for any increases, you know, inflation and increases in the rates and so forth. So...
Quick question. Last year, when they came and did their presentation for the savings, and I think we had Jason here as well, didn't they agree, didn't they agree to put some things in place to kept kind of monitor that? Did we do that?
I, I, I don't recall. I'd have to go back and look at my notes, Chairman, to, to see. But essentially, the way that it was done was to look at the consumption, look at the bills, compare the bills and the consumption, the number of kilowatt hours, I guess, that we, that we consume, or the amount of gallons of water, because they did put in some, some things for water consumption as well. So, that, that's the way that it was done. Now, as you, as you recall, we did hire Alex Tomas and Associates to do, to monitor what our charges were, making sure that we got the correct rates. And they did find where, for a number of years, the water plant had been charged at a higher rate. And so, there's a substantial amount of savings there that we're gonna real, we'll realize through that. And so, he has a pretty complicated program that he uses to make sure. Now, the question is, if we hire him, if we have him to take a look at our consumption in these buildings and make sure that we're on the correct rate structure, you know, we may be able to get some savings on that, too.
So, he, if we did that, he would help to kind of monitor what ABM?
Yes. I mean, he can, he can take a look at what ABM has reported and help us with that, yeah. We can certainly engage him to do that, if that's the board would like to do.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job. Our next is juvenile court requests approval of reallocating existing funds to secure qualified specialized staff intake position. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Judge Roberts has, in your packet, you have a request from Judge Roberts to adjust some salaries. The additional funding for the salaries would, would have to come from the, I think what we would do would be to take the additional TAV, some of the additional TAVT collections that we have, if the board approved that. I don't know if there's anyone here to speak to this issue tonight. I would recommend the board table it until someone from juvenile court can be here to articulate why this is necessary. I, I think what we could do is table it until the next meeting, and then we'll send notice to the juvenile court that they need to have somebody here, make sure that there's someone here to discuss the matter.
Motion?
Can be present to discuss.
It's been motion that we table this until March 3rd. Any discussion? It's been motion that we table by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four to zero. It's tabled until March 3rd. Thank you. Next is item number 13. Sheriff Office requests approval of the Barnsley Construction contract. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is a contract for, to, this is a contract to enter into with the Barnsley Construction Company for the design phase of the project, the SPOS project. It was the renovation and expansion of the sheriff's office, and the cost is 140,000. Sheriff is, is here in case you may have some, or he would like to address this. But also, Jeff Prine, who's the project manager, is here tonight as well in case that there, there are any questions. This is the first phase of this project. A total project was a SPOS project in excess of $3 million. And we'll get, once the design is done, then we would get to a price not to exceed a guaranteed maximum price contract.
Yeah. Any questions? No. Thank you. I seek a motion of approval, please.
The request of, for Barnsley Construction contract for design build services for the renovations and expansion of the log.
Second. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four to zero. Thank you, guys. Next, requesting, requesting approval of budget amendment finance. Brittany?
Okay, there is a packet in your, your packet tonight that looks like this. And there's three budget amendments included in this, and I have numbered them. So, once I'm talking about one, I'll tell you which number. So, this is number one. And this is being brought to you because we're bringing in additional revenue into the elections budget. Therefore, we are changing their bottom line budget, and this requires board approval. So, they had a pretty substantial ORR request, and they received $2,380 in revenue for this ORR. And they basically need that to just replenish the supplies that they used. So, they used a ton of paper, ton of toner. I think they may have wore out one of their printers while printing all this stuff. So, they need to request additional information there. Any questions about that one specifically?
Any questions, guys?
Number two is also another budget amendment for elections. And this one does involve personnel lines. That's why this is also being brought to you. And there was a special election. It's held by the city of Covington. And so, after the election, we bill the city for the expenses. So, this really is all this is. But since it is increasing their poll worker line item, we do need to bring this to the board. Any questions about that one?
Any questions, guys?
The third one is a budget amendment requesting to move the funds to the SPOS fund from the general fund for the overage and the judicial expansion. And we have seen a pretty significant increase of what we budgeted for in TBAT so far this year. We have already seen 1.4 million, what we expected to collect, and we anticipate to collect probably another 2 million on top of that by the end of the year. So, we would like to utilize these funds to replenish the SPOS for the overage and the judicial expansion. Any questions about that?
Any questions, guys? Commissioner Schultz?
So, Brittany, if we transfer this fund, these funds, does that impact our fund balance?
No, because this is revenues that came in this year. So, we are...
Okay, so that fund balance number that we...
That's not touching the fund balance. We're not dipping into our fund reserve, no.
Okay.
And there's also, page number four is an Excel spreadsheet that gives you the areas that the overage, the overage amounts and the judicial expansion.
Any more questions? Thank you so much. I think we're gonna do it all in one motion, if you will, please. Approval budget amendment. Commissioner Edwards?
Ms. Chairman, just time I'd like to make a motion that we approve requested budget amendments as stated by the county director, the county finance director.
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four to zero. Thank you, ma'am. Next is item number 15, fire service. Our request approval of a contract for a design bill. Mr. Kerr, please?
Thank you. This, this contract is for fire station number eight. And this is for part one of the contract, which is the same as we talked about with the sheriff's office, the pre-construction and design. Once we have all of that, then we will come back to the board for the second part, for the guaranteed maximum price. The cost of this is 101,000.
Commissioner Schultz, you're her second, Commissioner Mason. Any questions? All in favor? It passes four to zero. Thank you, guys. Item number 17, request approval for task order C dot three. Mr. Kerr, please. Let me see, dot four. Sorry.
This is for project management services for station two, which is an existing station that we had budgeted $250,000 to do some renovations to in order to move it, to, to bring it online as a full-time station. Station number four is the station that we are proposing to, to build in District One in the, we're currently looking at property that is located along Highway 213. And so, this is for those project management services. It's 53,000, I'm sorry.
Say the motion?
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve task order C dot four for Ascension Fire Station numbers two and four, project management services, a cost of 53,000, funding source from the general fund.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson, Dick, Commissioner...
Thank you. So, this, okay.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, Lloyd, station number two is the Rocky Plan?
That's correct.
Both of these are District One? Okay.
That's right. That's correct. Also, Ms. Chairman, if I could, a little bit of an update on station four. We have already issued the RFP. It's been out now for two weeks. I believe that it'll be back in mid-March. Is that correct? March 30th? Okay. March the 3rd. Okay, thank you. So, the RFP will be back in. Essentially, what we are doing, we, we took the plan, if you will, the general plan for station eight, and we're gonna replicate that. And so, it'll be back in March 3rd. We'll be able to select a contractor, then move ahead with the, with the project as quickly as we can from there.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Lloyd, this expedited process for station four, in your estimation, or maybe the chief's estimation, what, how mu, how much, how much time will that shave off the typical build for a station like station?
I, I believe we're, we're saving actually several months, probably four to six months. Definitely, yeah, four, six months.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone else? All in favor? It passes four to zero. Thank you. Next is county attorney request for approval resolution R 0218208, approval of the creation of the Newton County Public Facilities Authority. Ms. Megan Martin?
Thank you, Chairman Baines. To follow up on our old business discussion, before you all tonight, you have a resolution approving the creation of the Newton County Public Facilities Authority. As I had mentioned to Commissioner Henderson, our bond counsel has recommended that we could get more favorable interest terms if we go with the creation of a public facilities authority. We also did speak to bond counsel to ask whether or not the nonprofit vehicle, if we would reconstitute... would reconstitute that entity versus a public facilities authority, which would be best. And he did indicate that the public facilities authority is the right vehicle for our financing goals. You have this resolution before you tonight. We are going to take this to the local delegation. Sam Van Holtenberg from my office is already prepared to respond to our local delegation so that they'll understand that we are seeking for that to be created prior to crossover day. So we are moving real close here. So I would ask the board to approve this tonight so we can move forward with creating the public facilities authority. And every board member will get an appointment to the committee that will advise, that will be an advisory.
Signal motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move for approval of resolution R 021820A, creation of the Newton County Public Facilities Authority.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any, any more discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, and maybe, maybe somebody could kind of help me a little bit. I know typically when we do bonds, and that, I don't know, I guess I may use wrong or right word, typically the attorney or our attorney get a perk from the bond being issued. If this is similar case or something, you know, it feels like for every, every million dollars of bonds that are approved, I think somebody told me that they would get a perk of about 40 dollars, yep, somebody, you know, 'cause I notice a certain amount of perk.
I think there is a, typically there's a percentage of the bond that is paid to the bond counsel. That can be negotiated, and oftentimes there is a maximum amount that is a cap that's put on, put on those. And that's what we have done in the past. We have negotiated with our bond counsel.
Thank you. And the reason why I kind of brought it up, because, you know, we need total transparency as, as how money is being spent and who are receiving money. And I think just to put it all on the table so that we know as, so that our constituency, you know, would know. And that's something that typically, I didn't learn until a few years ago, that's kind of, that kind of how that works. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? Passes 4-0. Thank you. Next is item number 19, County Attorney, consider, consideration of the resolution R 021820, requesting that the local delegation introduce legislation to provide for the dis, for the dissolution, dissolution of the Newton County Recreation Commission. Ms. Mark, Ms. Megan Martin, please.
Thank you, Chairman Banks. The board, after some careful consideration, has made the decision that they want to work with our local delegation to dissolve our Newton County Recreation Commission and to bring it in-house. The Recreation Commission was created here at the board via resolution. State law says that we can dissolve that entity here at our board level. However, we're seeking to belt and suspenders this approach by getting our local delegation to support this endeavor. You have a resolution before you tonight that does seek to dissolve the Recreation Commission. In speaking with the local delegation, they would like to have this resolution that has been signed by all of you before they move forward with dissolving the Recreation Commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does it have to be unanimous, or is it a sum majority? I mean, how, how, how would that work?
A three-two, what, we just need three folks to approve.
So a simple majority, so.
I signal motion, please. Uh, you got, what, I'm sorry. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when we talk about this, um, bringing about a dissolution, can we break that down a little bit more so that our constituents kind of know what specifically, in layman's terms, this means?
Well, as we move forward, you all will have a lot of flexibility in the creation of the Recreation Department. The Recreation Commission is an entity that has overseen your recreation programming. What will happen, or what is envisioned to happen, is this will come under the county as a department. A citizen advisory board will be in place to give non-binding recommendations on those programs that our Recreation Department will be carrying forward. So the services will not change, it's the entity that's providing those services that will change. It will go from being the Newton County Recreation Commission to the Newton County Recreation Department.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if that's this board's recommendation, I, do, we need to add to this resolution? Does, does, does the resolution need to define in, in high-level terms, the, the, the assembling of the advisory committee, or pulling the existing board under the BLC if possible?
This is the first step of it. I would envision exactly what you're talking about. It would be much like when we created the Solid Waste Authority. So we'll put together those bylaws about how you want this to function. So this is simply saying, local delegation, we are in support of this, and we seek your support.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It, it's my understanding that the City of Covington have a representative on the, or had a representative, would not have been represented on that particular board. So my question that I, that I asked you is that I know we had did a intergovernmental agreement, I think about two years ago. And so how do we not include the City of Covington in this conversation? And, you know, and I, I think about what we had said, maybe a few meetings ago, to the first part of this year, about New One and how we work together with, with our municipalities. And yet we just, we haven't had a conversation with them. Moreover, for the City of Covington, there's, there's two representatives on this board that represent the City of Covington. And this Commissioner Cowan, who's not here, and myself, J.C. Henderson, who is here. So why are we rushing to disassemble this board? You know, and I'm just, I've just been trying to figure out the past few days from the conversations that I've had with, with my constituency here in town. And they wanted, they wanted us, at least the two commissioners who, who represent the City of Covington, me on the south side of town, and running Cowan, Commissioner Cowan, who's on the north side of town. So what I believe we need, we should do, is to table this until Commissioner Cowan come in, so we, so the City of Covington, we have their representation that they should have when we disassemble this board.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, can you address Commissioner Henderson's question about the City of Covington?
We can certainly, and when putting together the advisory board, or whatever you all decide to call that, we could make Covington, that they could have an appointment to that, or they could have two appointments. That would be something that you, in establishing this entity, assuming that this moves forward, that you can make the rules of who you want to be on that committee.
I, I think he's kind of asking about the employees. So with employees, would employees come in like our GIs, or you explain that part?
They'll be county employees. They will not be Recreation Commission employees or City employees. They would work for the county. Am I, am I missing a question here?
No, we have a couple of employees that are city employees now.
There'll be...
So what, so, go ahead.
Well, I understand that we pay the city employees, otherwise we pay what the city will normally pay them that comes from the county. I understand that, thanks for the setup. But what I'm seeing is this, is that on this board, the city representation is not here. I mean, I think Commissioner Cowan should be a part of this, to see if we move forward this resol, resolution to as well. You know, we've been talking good, so, you know, and I, and I tell you truth, I start to believe in New One. But I think in order to be a New One, and I think a couple of meetings ago, all these people came and said, "New One, New One, New One." I think if you truly New One that we've been talking about, then we've got to include our, our obviously neighbors, include the City of Covington, in this conversation, include Commissioner Cowan in this conversation. Because past this resolution, you haven't got, you haven't got it in place, at least on the board, in terms of the representation of the City of Covington. I think this is important.
So I guess I'm just, this is the first phase, and this is really just to get the blessings, so to speak, or from the, from our legislative delegation that they, they support this, that there's a lot more in terms of policies and procedures and the, and the way it's all structured that still has to come back to us after this meeting. So I, I think that in terms of those discussions for certainly being all, being in a collaborative role with the City of Covington, with those representatives who represent the City of Covington, I think that we have opportunity along the way to make sure that that happens. There's a finite amount of time for our legislative delegation to make this recommendation. Crossover day is March 11th, and so there's a certain amount of, there's notice that has to be. You can't just wait till March 11th to make this determination. You have to have a certain period of, of notification. So I, I would think that by doing it tonight, we give ourselves the time to go through those ne, jump through those next hoops where we do have the one Newton collaborative relationship in terms of how this actually structures out. I mean, I, that's just my assessment.
Yep. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. My last comment is this, is that you make one mistake, and you do it the right way. And I think the president of the board came up and said, say, "Y'all told me we could do this." At least that's what I heard. I thought that was what I heard. And you do it, and you get a bonus. And it's my understanding that the bonus that they receive came direct from the Recreation Department. The finance manager wrote a check out to them for the receipt. And you make a mistake, and you're always gonna change the department. You're gonna bypass even, even having a conversation with the City of Covington, who has an apartment on it, who we used to, we shoot, we used to work with, we still should work with them. You bypass them, and you're gonna go straight to the legislature, and you go with a simple majority. And you don't even, don't even have the input from a sitting district commissioner who is not president, who represents the City of Covington. Now, you know, I don't know, but, you know, I believe in doing stuff fair and in order. And I don't think that, that it is. And then you're thinking about, you know, with the director, that's my understanding, and all others, who's just sticking up for the employees who we felt like was underpaid. So at least you do what you do.
Anyone else? Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think what we are, what's on the agenda to discuss tonight, maybe slightly misconstrued about what tonight is supposed to be about. I don't think, from my understanding, and please correct me if I'm out of order, but I don't think tonight is determining the structure of the rec commission. I don't think it's making any final decisions about what that's gonna look like, how it's gonna look like, or who's gonna be there. I think tonight is just to begin an initial process. And then once we begin an initial process, then we will have an opportunity to come back and discuss with the City of Covington and the county come together as a whole to determine what this is going to look like. Is, is that what's correct? So we're not making decisions tonight about what it looks like, who's gonna be on it, who's gonna be there. None of that is taking place. This is just to kind of get the ball rolling and begin so that we can move forward into that discussion.
Yep.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to bring clarity to ensure that our citizens know and understand that we're not moving forward on this without Covington. That's not what we're doing tonight. So just to bring clarity, that's not the case, that's not what's being, that's not what's happening. We're getting the ball rolling so that we can come back, have that conversation to see what this will look like moving forward in the future, and include Covington in that discussion. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. I'd be agree. Um, County Attorney, Ms. Megan. What is that resolution stating?
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Resolution 0218/20, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners requesting the local delegation to introduce legislation at the regular 2020 session of the General Assembly of the state of Georgia to provide for the dissolution of the Newton County Recreation Commission. Whereas pursuant to Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1A of the Constitution of the state of Georgia, the Newton County Board of Commissioners is authorized to adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, or regulations relating to its property, affairs, and local government for which no provision has been made by general law and which is not inconsistent with the Constitution or any local law applicable there too. Whereas pursuant to Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 3A5 of the Constitution of the state of Georgia, the Board of Commissioners of Newton County is authorized to provide for parks, recreational areas, programs, and facilities within Newton County. Whereas OCGA Section 3664-3 authorizes the governing body of a county in its discretion to establish a system of supervised recreation, invest the power to provide, maintain, and conduct parks, playgrounds, recreation centers, and other recreational activities and facilities in a recreation board or any other existing body. Whereas in accordance with OCGA 3664-5, the Board of Commissioners of Newton County previously determined that the power to provide, establish, conduct, and maintain a recreation system should be exercised by a recreation board and therefore establish the Newton County Recreation Commission for that purpose. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Newton County is committed to and desires to be directly accountable to its constituents with respect to the development and maintenance of parks and recreation facilities and programs in Newton County to enhance the quality of life of its citizens. Whereas in order to meet its goals of responsibility and accountability, the Board of Commissioners of Newton County desires to return the power to provide, maintain, and conduct parks, playgrounds, recreation centers, and other recreational activities and facilities to the Board of Commissioners of Newton County. Whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners wishes to convey its desire to have local legislation passed providing for the dissolution of the Newton County Recreation Commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newton County Board of Commissioners respectfully requests that the local legislative delegation introduce legislation at the regular 2020 session of the General Assembly of Georgia, providing for the dissolution of the Newton County Recreation Commission. Legislation providing for such dissolution shall be presented to the Newton County local delegation in substantially the same form as attached to this resolution as Exhibit A, which is hereby adopted and approved by the Newton County Board of Commissioners, subject... subject only to any revisions by legal counsel for the Newton County Board of Commissioners and counsel for the General Assembly.
So, what you're saying is, is that we're going to, on this resolution, uh, do it with the, the board that we have now? And turn that into a department that we have?
No, actually, that's not what it's doing. It is saying to our local delegation that this county supports making this come up under, um, as I've heard some people say, the board. Our local delegation may choose not to do this.
I understand that, you know, but what I'm saying is, is you absolutely changed board.
Sorry, Commissioner Henderson.
Well, uh, thank you.
We're not saying that we're getting rid of anybody at this point. We're not disassembling or removing anybody at this point.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We are asking the local delegation to put in place a local act that would allow for the dissolution of the Recreation Commission. Until the local delegation does that, the board has decided that they want state-level support on this. So, it is not good, the board has determined they do not want to handle it via resolution for most accountability and transparent purposes. They want the state to take this and to give us guidance via their decision-making on next steps.
Any more questions? Take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve Resolution R zero-two-one-eight-two-zero, requesting that the local delegation introduce legisla- legislation to provide for the dissolution of the Newton County Recreation Commission.
Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Schultz. Any more discussion? Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
Well, certainly my extended vision is that, and my hope is that, uh, our current board stays in place and serves as an advisory committee, simply reporting to the board commissioners and, and, and a department, as a department. I don't know if that'll happen. I've got, um, you know, I got good friends sitting on this board. My dad was a member of the founding board, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, th- this is something that, that just kind of weighed on me and I've not taken lightly. Um, this is a volunteer board, um, an un-elected volunteer board of, of, of minds that absolutely put first the welfare of our children and the recreational relationship with children. So, my kids came up through it, uh, I came up through it, my kids came up through it. Uh, my hope is that those guys would, would hang around and, and just simply become a department of the county. I think it's, I think it's time. Um, I, Commissioner Schultz and I had a conversation today. She may want to enlighten you more on that conversation, I don't know. But it seems to be not an uncommon practice, and, and I think the timing is just now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
So, um, I did, I did make several calls to commissioners and chairman throughout that I have relationships with on the board managers for ACCG. Um, they gave me a lot of reassurance that this was, uh, this was a good way to proceed. Um, I, I agree with Commissioner Edwards that the time that the Rec Commission has put in as a volunteer board, that we need to really be appreciative of that, and I would hope that they would continue to serve. I think we have a, already have a good model. If you'll recall, Senior Services was a separate entity, and we brought them under the Board of Commissioners. And that has been a seamless transition. There is still an advisory board in place. And, um, I, I just, I think that we have a, we have a good track record of doing that. I, I certainly am sympathetic to, um, Commissioner Henderson's need to include the city of Covington. The, the long history of the Rec, the Rec Mission, um, and, you know, it's in the nineties, they, they were brought back, the city of Covington Rec, uh, Rec Commission was, or Rec Department was brought up under, um, was, I guess they, they came together with an intergovernmental agreement. So, I think that we need to continue that, uh, collaboration. But I, I, I have optimism that moving forward, we can do this in a collaborative manner that will make for a really strong recreation department.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. This is my last comment. For twenty years, you know, Rec, Recreation Commission has been in existence. And just for the past year, they changed everybody on the board, took folks off and changed them. And then they put this group of, of men's and women's on this board, and they make somewhat one mistake because it was all new. Make one mistake. And as soon as they made mistakes, "Oh, you made a bad thing." Said, "We're going to get rid of all of it." And that's why we are here now. We understood as a board, at least I understood, that we couldn't, you couldn't just get rid of them by a three, uh, three, uh, majority vote, home rule, under home rule, that you had to go to your state legislatures. And this would happen. That's why we got a, a solid waste authority. And before you know it, we have our authority that's under the Board of Commissioners. That does what? So, my question is, you make one mistake and you change the entire board, and now we sit and looking at, say, "We're going to go to our state legislature and we're going to change." They don't need to be changed. The reason why it was set up, to keep the politics out. Once you put it in a department, the politics come in because of, "Well, we're going to do this because I want to get elected this year." "We're going to do that because I want to get elected that time." Let's keep our kids out of politics. It's not the board's fault, just because when you put it together, you took all the old folks out. And when you take the older people out who knows what, how it was created, then those are the problems that you run into. But they haven't did anything that they didn't, that they weren't told they could do. And so, all that, what I'm saying is, is this. If you're going to make a decision, at least you should have the whole board here.
Thank you, sir. Um, yeah, before you vote, um, uh, I, we, we have a, let me tell you, we, I think we have a, uh, stand-up board. Um, we got high school coaches. We got, uh, former high school coaches on the board. Um, and that give the kids an opportunity to, to grow up and see the people that they're going to end up being coached by in high school. Uh, so, we're not asking that board to go away. We're asking, uh, this board to help that board with managing, uh, the operations of, of the Rec Department. Uh, you got the chairman out there who I think, uh, is a stand-up guy. If he wasn't, I would never chose him as, as the chairman. I think he does a great job. But, you know, you can't expect him to know everything. He don't get paid, you're correct, he don't get paid. Uh, that's why we need somebody that, that does get paid to help oversee the operations of it. And, uh, we're going to see whether they stay on as an advisory board. We hope that they will. Uh, and, and I, and I, I just think we have a, a great team over there. Uh, and they came in at a, at a time that we needed them, uh, to come in and kind of settle things down, and they, and they did that. Uh, nobody throwing up under the rug, they definitely did that. Uh, but also, we don't need them to be taking hits, uh, when we, when we pay people to, that, that oversee the operations of, of the departments. Uh, and so, that's another, that should be, uh, something to give them cover as well. So, uh, I just want to make sure we put that out there. We ain't saying that they did a bad job, but they do a bad job because they don't. They came in and took a, uh, uh, a department or a Rec Commission that was, uh, that was in kind of bad shape, and they helped turn it around, so, and we're thankful for that. But there's a motion on the floor. Uh, there's no more discussion. All in favor? All opposed? If passage three-one, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is item number, uh, twenty-two, final reading. We're going to get, uh, Ms. Martin to help us with somebody's name. Uh, final reading. Texaco Food Mart, two-one-five-six, Highway eighty-one North, Oxford, Georgia, three-zero-zero-five-four. That's Kushwander, Si. See? Seen? Seen? Final reading, um, that is District Five. Somebody want to take that for Commissioner? You'll take it? Okay.
I move for approval of, um, Texaco Food Mart at twenty-one fifty-six, Highway eighty-one North, Oxford, Georgia, three-zero-zero-five-four, Kushwander, Si.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner Mason. End of discussion. All in favor? If passage four to zero, thank you.
First reading, uh, Quick Spot Marathon, one-zero-two-six-zero, Highway thirty-six, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-three. Jase, Jase Bree, V Patel, uh, District Five, first reading. First reading, Salem, Salem Food Mart, three-five, three-eight Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-six. Uh, you want to help us with that one, Ms. Martin?
Rosini Karani.
Rosini Karani, uh, District Three, first reading. First reading, Chevron Food Mart, six-six Allen Road, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-four. Uh, you want to have a shout-out?
Shana Was Hussein?
All right. District Three, first reading. This is an opportunity, guys, we let citizens come up and make comments. Uh, if you would, you can come down, please, you got three minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone want to make comments? Anyone want to make comments? Thank you, that portion of our public here is, I mean, our, uh, commission, our citizen coming is closed. Uh, next we got, uh, Commissioner comments. Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I do have a, a comment. And my comment is that there's a whole lot of changes, uh, that's, that's been done. And, you know, and, and I for one said, "Well, you know, I, I like, you know, changes, some are going to come where you want or not." But what I do know, in, over the few years that I've been on, on top side of this planet, is that some are good and some are not so good. But when I go out, especially to a game at Recreation and see the kids, you know, there's a lot of them that really wants to be that superstar or, or that player, that basketball star, we give them that opportunity, and they are giving. And I just want some just proud of each and every one of them. And lastly, but not least, and I almost, uh, was, was thinking about it, you know, as I reflect over, over the time that, um, a good friend of mine, I believe he's, he's, but I believe, I know he's a good friend of, of the chairman, Forrest Sory Jr. Uh, one of the things he says, sometimes when you, when you speak up, deaconsaw, there were, uh, Reverend always say, "Call them deaconsaw." Deaconsaw, when you speak up, sometimes you speak up by yourself, sometimes you're kind of all by yourself. That doesn't mean if, if a vote is, um, uh, three, three-one or five-one that you're wrong. It means that in time, you will find out whether the vote was right or whether it was wrong. But we're going to, we're, we're really going to miss my friend because our colleague said, I said, "Forrest?" I said, "We got one more Good March written due here in Covington." And, and he, I was with him, said, "I'll be with you." And so, uh, for my time come, I believe we'll be in heaven with that one whole Good March that we're going to have with Jesus. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Schultz? Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I kind of want to add to what Commissioner Henderson talked about, change. Uh, working for a Fortune one-hundred company on a full-time basis, um, and being with that company for the past sixteen years, I have seen a lot of change. And I have gone through a lot of change courses, a lot of change meetings on how to really adapt and how to deal with change. And change doesn't always feel good. Um, but I believe that if we maintain the mindset that this board was created to change the trajectory of where we're going and to really give our citizens what they are asking for. Um, and basically being in a position where we're removing ourselves. And I know that as commissioners, we have our own mindsets, we have our own ideas and ideologies and what we want. But I think if we really step back and we take the opportunity to say what is going to benefit this county as a whole, and sometimes the decisions that we have to make may not feel good. It may not feel great. It may not feel wonderful right now. But if we continue to stay stagnant, if we continue to remain where we are, we will never advance. We will never move forward. If we continue to make the same old decisions that we've always made, we will remain in the same place that we have always been. And, you know, we, if, if we want something different, we've got to do something different. And so, I just want to say, I'm excited about where we're going, where we are, um, and how we're moving forward, and I think the decisions that we are making, um, are great, and they're good, and they are going to benefit this county long-term. Uh, I believe we're making short-term changes for long-term positive gains. Whether it feels that way right now or not, in the long run, I believe, because I know that when I make a decision, I'm not making a decision just based off of demand. I have a higher being, and it's called God, that I listen to when I'm making a decision behind this, this shoe, this horseshoe. Because it's important. It's important, the decisions that we make. And so, I don't take these decisions lightly, and I think through them from a very educational perspective. And so, I just want to say, I think we're doing a great job, and let's keep that momentum up. And I do also, for my last forty-four seconds, um, I want to talk about the voter equipment, um, demonstration that is going to be taking place February the twenty-sixth at Porter Memorial Library from six to seven. Uh, please come out, uh, for anyone that is not familiar with the voter, uh, equipment that's going to start in March. Please come out, uh, Porter Memorial Library, February twenty-sixth, from six o'clock to seven o'clock P.M. Tell everybody in the county that wants to take advantage of that, uh, will be there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go, 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 go eight more seconds, because I, 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 I'm playing Commissioner Edwards.
Well, can I get an amen? So, um, that's a tough one to follow. Uh, I, I wanted to, uh, I talked to Senator, uh, State Senator Brian Strickland and, uh, Representative Dave Belton yesterday and about, um, creating a four-lane corridor from, uh, from Highway eleven to Highway two-seventy-eight, Highway eleven south, two-seventy-eight, probably half a mile or less. Uh, I know it's, the right-of-ways are already there for a four-lane, um, type corridor. And it would, it, it would resolve, I know we mentioned back during the rezone or the, um, the zoning amendment of that area down there, we had talked about. Some of the constituents had a problem- we had talked about, some of the constituents had a problem with the traffic. I have a problem with the traffic there. Um, so, so I think it, and, and from what they're telling me, now is the time to ask. So, I'm gonna be asking, so it has to be in the form, they said it would, they would prefer it be in the form of a resolution. And, uh, pass the resolution that we make that a four-lane corridor from Highway eleven to two-seventy-eight, which is, which will be, and that intersection will be around about in the very near future, if I understand. So, uh, it would help ease some of those traffic concerns out there, for sure, coming from, uh, twenty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Wow. Thank you, guys. Um, I, um, had the, had the privilege of going to a friend of mine's bedside. Um, someone who has, has done so much, I say for Newton County, I just won't say for the African-American community. I said for Newton County as a whole. Uh, seeing him and hearing him whisper to me, say that all I wanted was the best for Newton County, Newton County. Uh, someone who put his life on the line. See the pictures of him marching, people threatening him, and things like that. Uh, and, you know, to hear him whisper and say, hey, I'm so proud of the direction that this county is going. See people are actually in unity. It's a loud statement for this, for this board. Guys, I, I appreciate all of you, all that you do. Uh, Deacon Forrest Horry, as, as, uh, Deacon Commissioner Henderson just stated. Uh, you know, he was a little rough around the edges, and he had to be, uh, for the time that he came along, uh, in this community. And, uh, I'm, I'm so thankful that he did. He paved the way for a lot of people. Uh, and he gonna be truly missed in this community. And, uh, I'm just so thankful that I had an opportunity to be a part of his life. I met him over twenty-something years ago. Uh, when he came to our, our church. He came in, just like you seen him out there on the road. He came in pumping his fist. And I met him, I said, whoa, now, whoa, 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 slow down just a little bit. And, uh, and he did. And he, he started training to be a deacon. I trained him to be a deacon. Uh, you know, I seen him change, I mean, big time. And, you know, see him start professing that he loved the Lord was a major thing, uh, for me. So I'm thankful that I had an opportunity to have him be a part of my life and be a part of his life. And I'm also thankful like that, uh, guys that you following along all with finances. And this board has made some major, major turn. Uh, and can't nobody testify no better than that than Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Schultz, uh, who've been here, seen the rough days. Uh, and so we appreciate you guys, appreciate our finance department, Nicole, when she was here, and Brittany's here, and, uh, our county manager. And also you guys, because you guys, uh, y'all made the votes, um, to say, hey, we gonna stay, we gonna stay fast right here until we can make this change. So, I'm thankful, so, thank you for you guys. We do not have, well, I wanna recognize also, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Mike, uh, Michael, Michael Quinn, is that right? From ACCG. Uh, sir, you know, we don't normally do this, but do you, would you like to have a comment? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Uh, guys, we don't have a need for executive session tonight. Uh, we do not. But please be looking around for a special call meeting that Ms. Jack is gonna turn out pretty soon here. So, if I, anything, if there's nothing else, I seek a motion that we adjourn. Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Edwards. All in favor? Aye, four to zero.